I'm Larry Curtis, campaign manager for Gary Keith Sr., along with Ed Miller, a part-time state employee working for State Senator Michael Brady, and also radio host of Stand Up Strong, Carl Pride, Media Center Director of Brockton Cable Access, and Susanna Sudborough, a reporter with The Enterprise. Together, our group has worked hard to bring to you, the voters of the city of Brockton, this Candidates Forum. Some individuals have expressed both Ed's and my involvement in the interview process due to political association with some of the candidates for office. Together, we are here to ensure you that a balanced and transparent process has taken place during the interviews conducted October 5th, 6th, and 7th. All candidates have had the right of not being interviewed by any one of us if they believed a conflict existed. I am happy to report that all scheduled interviews were conducted without any candidates' objections. This forum would not have taken place without the collaborative efforts of our volunteers, The Enterprise, Brockton Cable Access, and our candidates. Remember, to get out and vote on Tuesday, November 2nd, it's an important election for the city of Brockton. Thank you. Hello, and welcome to Candidates Forum 2021. I am your host, Larry Curtis, and we are pleased to have in studio with us today for Ward Three City Council, Jason Montero.
Yes.
Jason, welcome to BCA, and tell us, in a few words, why you believe you are the best candidate for the Ward Three City Council seat?
Sure. Well, I think we need some fresh faces, we need some fresh energy in the City Council. We need city councils, new city council persons that are going to listen to the community and what the community and constituents are asking for, and that's the one that's beholden to special interests. And I believe I'm that person. And now I'm sitting on the Southeastern School Committee, so I do have experience with, obviously it's not exactly the same, but I do have some experience as well making such types of decisions that you would be asked for to be done at the city council level.
Okay, all right. We have a series of questions we've asked from all the city council candidates, so I'm going to start off with, what do you believe is the most important issue facing the city council today? Why? And what recommendations would you make moving forward?
For me, it's our housing issue. Housing justice is very important to me, and I've seen it come up once in a while at City Council, but I don't think that we've taken enough time to actually study that issue that we have here in Brockton with housing, and also how we can go about resolving the situation here in Brockton. Because I believe the housing is a human right, and I believe that as a city, we need to offer housing to our residents that's safe, that is affordable, because that's where it starts. So if we have that, that's a good starting point for our residents to kind of be more, or have a chance to compete with some of the other folks around.
So a combination of affordable housing in addition to existing housing, ensuring that our community residents are able to live in a safe environment?
Yeah, right. The plan that I've been looking at is the Vienna housing.
Explain that for us.
Yeah, it's a combination of state, local, and nonprofit organizations that work together. They run these housing. Sometimes when we hear the word social or public housing, we have a negative connotation to it.
Projects.
Right. Yes.
In my day.
Right, 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 right. And when I was researching projects in social housing, public housing, the one that kept coming up was the Vienna model, where it would be a partnership between the nonprofit, the state, and the local level, where the state and the local level subsidize the rent, but the nonprofit runs it, and everyone that purchases or rents, they're part of the decision-making. And the city's just there to make sure that the rules are followed, that no one is being taken advantage of. Obviously, there are a lot more details that goes into this when it comes to how we'd go about paying for it and all that, but I think that's something that we can implement here in Brockton to give our residents a chance. And then, in these housing, they're almost like blocks, but they're almost like small communities, so you'd have everything in there sometimes that you would need. So you'd have kindergarten, daycare if that's needed, some other types of school, clubs for both the residents, for adults, young adults, and kids, religious institutions, depending on what different types of churches that could be right there for the residents, restaurants, all that. So then they would have, and also parks and all that. And if you look at what the city's doing now with the development downtown and trying to connect all the green areas as well, you can put all that together to build a bigger community that's all, or small communities, I should say, interconnected into a bigger community where everybody would have affordable housing, or the ones that need to could have the affordable housing, and especially now here in Brockton where rent is getting really high. And being a teacher, a lot of my students, that is the main complaint when they come to me, is that their family are having issues of being able to afford rent.
Right, okay. As a ward counselor, you generally are required to vote on issues in support of the overall city.
Right, correct.
How would you vote if the vote you were to cast would not end up being a favorable vote for your specific ward?
Right. First, I would hope I would have time to bring the issue to my constituents and explain to them the situation, how, yes, this might not be something that is overall positive for us in the ward, but when we look at the entirety of our community, it would be a plus. And if the residents agree with whatever decision, oh, actually, whatever decision that the constituents and the residents come up with, I will try to support full-heartedly. So, yeah, because you're there as the voice of the constituents and the residents of the ward. It's not what I say, or what the councils at large say. We're not there to represent ourselves, we're there to represent the populace, and that's why you should always try to bring whatever issue it is to our constituents first.
So taking the time to inform your constituents of the decisions that need to be made coming forward, and your reasoning for maybe voting in that manner?
Right, right, right.
All right, okay. Small business owners have expressed their frustration over the process of getting their projects approved in a timely fashion. Primary concerns tend to deal with the length of time it takes to get approvals from the different boards and city departments, which may have resulted in businesses taking their opportunities to other towns. What does the city need to do to change this process?
Yeah, it was funny, because I've been coming across this question, or this form of a question, a lot lately. I think, one is, we need to streamline our bureaucracy somehow, make it a little easier. Also, almost how we have the push for to purchase "Made in the USA," maybe we should have a "Made in Brockton" slogan-type deal, so kind of advertise a little bit more, give us some incentives.
Built in Brockton.
Yeah, or "Built in Brockton," yeah. So that we can give our homegrown businesses a chance to compete against some of these other folks, and even other cities. Brockton being a gateway city, and we have the train station right here.
We have three train stations right here.
Right, so we have access, so these businesses would have access, so we need to help our small businesses. They should be able to be here, be in Brockton, compete with some of the other towns, and build the small businesses here in Brockton. But at the same time, we need to always support a type of economic development that's going to benefit the public as well, not just think about the businesses, but think about how the interaction between that business, that small business, and the public, so that we create businesses that are supporting families, or jobs that can support families. Also think about equal opportunity, an equitable standard of living, and also try to make it a more equal distribution of wealth while we also guarantee workers' rights. I'm big on workers' rights, I've always been part of a union, so that's something I push for a lot. But we have to figure out how to, one, streamline the system, make it easier, and also have some goodies there, some incentives to keep our homegrown businesses here and help them grow here in the city.
Okay. Currently, the positions for city council mayor are basically elected every two years. Would you be in favor of transitioning to a four-year election cycle, and would you also endorse these positions, being what are considered part-time positions in the city council, to ones of full-time positions?
Yes, I would endorse both. Whether I win or lose, I would endorse both. One, because if every two years, the city's spending a lot of money in these elections every two years, so if you do every four, that's giving some time to build up that equity or that money that we have to spend, and give the city also more time to advertise and have the push to vote, and get more of our citizens involved and able to vote. And the four years or so would allow the city councils and the mayor to implement their plan without, if you think about it, you get in today, and then six months in, you have to think about running again for reelection.
Re-election, sure.
Yeah, so if you have that, if you have four years, at least it gives you two and a half years to implement your plan. When it comes to full-time or part-time, I think this is an issue that's been coming up a lot with the city council, and in some of the discussions, they are doing full-time job, just it's labeled part-time, and again, if we go back to what I said earlier about equity and also workers' rights, they need to be compensated for the work that they're actually doing. And it's not, again, I'm not saying a pay raise, I'm just saying, if they're going to be full-time...
You know, a full-time, you're going to get a pay raise.
Right, no, no, what I'm saying, right, what I'm saying, not a huge amount, but I'm saying, but I'm saying that it's not really about the money, but if they're full-time, they have more time to work or implement those issues that the constituents want them to implement, instead of really running, and you're really running through issues one after the other.
Okay. Our last question is, basically, three years ago, the city entered into a trash agreement that resulted in one of basically smaller trash containers. This decision resulted in homeowners having to purchase city-approved trash bags for any and all overflow. These bags have seen a 25% increase in cost after the second year of the contract. You can purchase consumer trash bags far less. Why is the city required to use specific Brockton bags and not a more affordable trash bag?
Yeah, well, I think the city could still use a Brockton-specific bag and figure out a way to make it more affordable to the community, or explain where is this money going into? How's that, so if it's $5 for...
Four bags.
Where is that money going? We need to have transparency, explain to the constituents exactly where that money's going. It could be that, okay, yeah, we might say it's more expensive, but look at everything that we're helping, where all this money is going to help, whether it be schools, or the parks, or any of those issues. But if the city could figure out a way to make it, obviously, more affordable to the residents, I'm for that. I was very upset when we received the new trash...
32-ounce container, 32-gallon container.
It was funny, because first, the recycling one, I thought that was the trash one, but then when I looked at it, I said, no, this is the recycling one. I said, why is my recycling one a lot larger than my trash one? So, yeah, so I think, and when you drive around some of the other towns and cities, you see that their trash containers are large.
Similar size.
Yeah, so we need to figure out what exactly is going on, and figure out a way to, one, make it more affordable for our residents, and also, because it's not fair as well, if you look at some of the families that live in, or if you have a large family, whether you live in a family home or a multifamily home, you're going to run out of space in the container, so we need to figure out how that could be. And I know they're trying to force you to be, to think a little bit more about recycling, and about how to be a little bit smarter in your shopping and whatnot, not to make a lot of waste, but that could be, both, I think those two things could go hand in hand. Just do a little bit more educating of the public, but also allow us to have a little bit larger containers, but at a more affordable price.
All right, we are actually out of time. I want to thank you for coming in today, giving us your overview of things for the Ward Three City Council position, and we want to remind our viewers out there, don't forget to get out and vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. Your vote is important for the continued improvement and direction of our city. On behalf of all of us here at BCA, thank you very much. Hello, and welcome to Candidates Forum 2021. I am your host, Larry Curtis, and we are pleased to have in studio with us today, Mark D'Agostino. Mark currently is the sitting Ward Three School Committee member, and he is currently running for the Ward Three City Council seat. Mark, welcome to Candidates Forum.
Thank you.
Mark, take a couple of minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you would be a better candidate for the Ward Three City Council.
Sure. Well, first, thank you for having this forum and having me in, and giving me the opportunity to speak. So, a little bit about myself, you know, again, my family ties in the city go back to the '50s, when my grandparents moved here from East Boston. You know, I'm a business owner here in the city, a family-owned business in Brockton since 1986, you know, and I've lived here as a young child, and went to the Kennedy School and the Hancock School, where my son goes in the first grade. And, you know, so I have long-term ties to the city, but, you know, my wife and I have been married for 11 years, and like I said, we have one son and two dogs, and we, you know, enjoy living here in the city and all that it has to offer people, and I think Brockton does have a lot to offer.
Okay. Real quick question, what's the decision to jump from like, school committee to city council?
Sure, sure. So, you know, obviously, we know that it's an open seat. I think that, and this is to the part I didn't get to of why am I the better candidate, I think that on the school committee, I have proven myself to be a leader, and that's kind of what my campaign's been about, is proven leadership, and I think that I will have that transferable leadership to bring to the city council, and, you know, be able to be of further benefit to the residents of Ward Three.
Okay. In your hunt to become a city councilor, what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing the city council today?
Most pressing issue facing the city council today? You know, I think that you hear a lot of people that feel like maybe they're not being listened to, and so I certainly want to make sure, that's one of the things I want to make sure I'm doing, is having regular ward meetings, so that constituents feel like they're being heard. And also, we have a lot of challenges with safety and infrastructure, and so those are certainly issues that are going to be facing the next council, too, and...
So do you feel that it's a transparency issue for what the council full-body may be doing here, or not doing, potentially?
Well, I think that there is a perception of that, you know, among some voters, some residents, and so that'll certainly be something I want to work on, to make sure that people feel like transparency is greater, you know, when we're doing something big. I want to bring those things to a ward meeting and talk about them, and tell people about them, and fill them in, so that when we're taking the vote, and when I'm making a vote, both my constituents feel they've been heard, and there's no surprises, they're aware of what we're doing, they've heard about it in a meeting that, you know, we talked about, and I took questions on, and so, you know, people aren't surprised when we're doing things, or by how I'm voting on things, because, again, you know, I had those face-to-face conversations.
Well, that leads to another interesting question. As a city council, you have a vote. Basically, more often than not, when you're casting your vote for whatever the issues may be, it's generally going to be in the best interest of the city overall, okay? But you're a ward counselor.
Right.
What do you do, and how do you cast your vote, if the vote being cast is favorable to the city, but maybe not favorable to your ward?
That's actually an easy one, and I'll tell you why. As you said, I would be a ward counselor. The people of Ward Three voted for me to represent them, they put me in that office. So, that's a no-brainer. If I have to choose, I'm going to come down on the side of my constituents and the people that put me there.
All right, straightforward. Actually, I love it, quite honestly.
I try, that's how I try to do things.
That's awesome, you know. Three years ago, this is kind of a fluff question, in my opinion, but it's one that we came up with.
Okay.
The city entered into a trash agreement that resulted in smaller trash containers. The decision resulted in homeowners having to purchase city-approved trash bags for their overflow. These bags have seen a 25% increase in cost after the first two years, and consumer trash bags can certainly be purchased for a lot less. Why is the city required to use specific Brockton bags and not a more affordable trash bag?
So, my understanding of that whole thing and how that worked, and I understand what they were trying to do, right? They're trying to keep costs down, and then if you need extra, you get these trash bags, and you basically, from, as I understand it, from what I've been told from counselors, there's no profit on those, you're paying for the cost of getting rid of that bag of trash, you know?
The trash contained within that bag?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, right.
What I wish they had done, and, you know, when that contract comes up, this is something that I would like to see explored, is, I would like for it to have been done in a way where people had options, like, I can go down and I can purchase an extra recycling container for a fee. I did that, I just, over the weekend, $55, I believe it was, or $50, I got an extra recycling container. I wish there was an option or a way where I could say, I would like to pay the extra to have an extra barrel, just like I did with recycling, and I don't know, we'd have to look into what those costs are, but that would be the one thing that I wish they had done in that deal, that maybe when it comes up again, we could look at, is a way to give residents some choices and some options.
So, the way that I understand it, for a little more clarity, is that that's part of what they call, I think, an enterprise fund?
Right.
You know, that's self-paying, basically speaking?
Yes.
You know, even though we pay a sewer and refuse fee within our tax base, those trash bags, as I think you mentioned earlier, when you use them, there is no profit going to the city, nor to the, in this case, it's, who's that trash hauler?
Republic.
Republic services, thank you, Republic Services, because basically, trash is, cost is done on a tonnage.
Right.
So that, you put a 30-gallon trash bag in, you put 10, 15, 20, 30 pounds, that's the cost, that's offset by the cost of the bag itself. Okay, but I like the option of maybe purchasing additional containers.
Right, some people don't need that, some people, that one barrel, some households, that's fine, and that's all they need.
Right, okay. Currently, city council is elected every two years. Does the city need to consider changing the election cycle to every four years? Would you support the changing of that, and would you also consider the council position going from part-time to full-time?
So, I'll take what I consider the easier, shorter one first. Full-time council, I don't support that.
Okay.
I don't support that, because there are 11 counselors. First of all, you'd have to be in, for a salary, that would have to be in the high-five figures, I would imagine, so that's going to cost taxpayers a lot of money.
Yeah.
And you also run the risk...
Whether you needed 11 at that point in time would also be an argument.
Well, and so that's the next point, is, do we have enough things that the council needs to have 11 full-time counselors to do? You know, and I'm not sure that I, you know, feel that's accurate, but also, then you run the risk of it turns into more politicking, because you're trying to keep a job, versus, like, you know, I believe the council salary is $15,000.
Correct.
You don't do this for $15,000, you do this because you care about the city, you want to give back, you want to be involved, you think you have something, you can offer something to the community, that's why you do this. Now, if it's a $75,000 job, or, you know, something, I'm not saying that's the number, whatever it is...
Whatever the number would be.
Now, you're trying to keep a job, and does your motivation change? Maybe, maybe not. So that's one worry that I have about that. So, my answer on that is no, on the full-time counselors.
Okay.
And then, the term.
The term.
So, let me first say that, whatever the people decide, I'm happy to serve, if it's a two-year or a four-year, I respect the will of the voters and the rights of them to say, this is what we want. However, yes, I would support a longer term, a three-year, four-year, you know, I think that's a good discussion point to see which way it should go to, but I would support a longer term, because you're always campaigning.
Correct.
You know?
You're going into a potentially new position that you have to begin to learn, and 12 months later, I got to campaign to keep that if I choose to do so.
Right, you really only get a year.
Yeah, right.
And then, yeah, and again, hopefully, it would take some of the politics out of some of the things that go on.
Okay, all right. Small business owners have expressed their frustration over the process of getting their projects approved in a timely fashion. Primary concerns tend to deal with the length of time it takes to get approvals from the different boards or city departments, which has resulted in these businesses taking their business opportunities to other cities or towns. What does the city need to do to change this process?
We need to make a streamlined process, a streamlined process that is simple, fair, the same for everybody. You want to do a project here in the city, here's the list, it's the same for everybody, here's the list, here's what you need, you get this stuff together for us, you come before the council, or whatever appropriate, you know, licensing board there is. If you've got everything there, it should be a simple process. So I think we need a streamlined process. If you've got to go between, before multiple boards, I mean, I know there are some circumstances where that's just how it would be, and it's that way everywhere else.
Yep.
But overall, I would want to see us look at how we can have a more streamlined, simplified process to get those things done.
So some of, a follow-up to that is that, you know, checklist of all the requirements for whatever your development project may be, or business interest may be, you mentioned you may have to go to in front of multiple boards, depending on the issues at hand.
Right.
But there's got to be some way of navigating that, and not going to one board and saying, you're missing this, you need to come back next month.
Right, right, and that's where I say this is a simplified process, and, you know, here it is, here's everything you need, there's no surprises, we're going to tell you upfront, we're not going to add things later, you know, oh, well, I think I'd like to see that, no, this is the list of what we required, and they've presented that, you know, and everything's in order.
All right. We've got a couple of minutes left here, and typically, what we allow the candidate to do is to make their pitch as to why you're the best candidate for city council in Ward Three.
Well, thank you. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to talk to voters. So, as I said, you know, my campaign is about proven leadership. You know, I'm a business leader, I've been a leader on the school committee, serving for, going on two years as the vice chairman of the school committee, and leading the school committee through... school committee through this pandemic, and so when I talk about proven leadership, I've been a leader on fiscal responsibility on the school side, I'll be a leader on fiscal responsibility as a City Councilor. You know, we've, when I talk to voters, and when I'm out door knocking, they're talking about safety with me, and so that's going to be a priority for me. And they're talking about infrastructure, our roads, our pipes, so these are the things that folks are talking to me about, and so those are going to be priorities as well. I think I have a track record of delivering on the things that people tell me are important to them, and so that's why I say, you know, when I say proven leadership, I say that, you know, literally, for the last six years, I hope voters have seen that I have proven myself to be a leader, and do the things that they tell me are important to them. And I hope on, in November, the voters will give me the opportunity to take that leadership and take that record, and then become their counselor, and continue to move Ward Three forward, and, you know.
Well, I'll say, on behalf of the voters in Ward Three, I'm sure they all want to reach out and say thank you for the service that you have given to the students here in the city as a school committee member, and we're going to close our timeout here right now, and thank you for your service on the school committee, but more importantly, wish you the best of luck going forward as a City Councilor. I want to thank Mark for being here. Don't forget to vote, citywide election, Tuesday, November 2nd, and thank you for being here, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.